Morning, everybody. This time, I will call the Tuesday, August 1st work session of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners to order, and I will ask Commissioner Lewis Weatherspoon in order to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance indication.
Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious, heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, thanking you for another day, thanking you for the many blessings you give us. Lord, we ask that you be with us as we go about conducting the business of Harnett County. May everything that we do be pleasing in your sight. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Right, well, happy August, everybody. Go ahead and get this started with North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Youth Summit, Mr. Tim Matthews.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope you're doing well this morning. Every year, North Carolina 4-H partners with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to increase youth involvement in county government. This initiative helps youth to learn more about county government, as well as how to become more involved in local decision-making. So, it's an honor this morning for me to come before you and to introduce our representative this year, Genevieve Fleming. She will be representing Harnett County at your meeting in August, and so I'm just going to introduce her and let her say what she needs to say.
Thank you for having me this morning. My name is Genevieve Fleming. I am 16 years old. I live in Upper Little River Township, and I will be Harnett County's youth delegate at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. I have been doing 4-H since I was six years old. I started out, my first program was Brett in a Bag at the Lillington Community Center, and I'm so glad that I came back after that because 4-H has had so many wonderful opportunities for me. Some of my favorite programs have been the cooking programs. I've done beginner cooking in the kitchen where they teach you basic cooking skills. You learn basic safety, basic knife skills. I've been to a Cooking Around the World Spin Club where we made different dishes from all over the world. We made a French dessert, a German cucumber salad, and I have done advanced cooking in the kitchen programs multiple years in a row. This year, we made French creme brulee and sushi, and we ended the week with this wild cooking competition called Greg's Grocery Games where they take youth to the food line, the local food line in Lillington. They give you a budget, they give you time limits, they give you wild cards, they throw wild cards at you, like you can only shop on a certain aisle, or you can only use certain spices, and it's really fun. I did a program a couple weeks ago called Farm to Fork where they take youth to local farms, and they teach us all about where our food comes from and the benefits of buying local, and we got to take some of those fresh ingredients back to the agricultural center kitchen and cook with them, learn all about meat safety. We learned things like the 10% campaign. I learned about the 10% campaign, which basically says that if North Carolinians would spend 10% of their local food budget, or 10% of their annual food budget, buying local foods, then that would put $3.5 billion back into the local economy annually, and I thought that was really cool. And I can't wait till these sort of programs are available to more children, thanks to the $50,000 grant that is going towards upgrading the kitchen at the Ag Center, and I really appreciate that as a youth, and soon, a lot more children will be able to attend, and a lot more families will really appreciate that. I've been very lucky that all of the cooking programs that I've wanted to do have been available to me in Harnett County, but there are some programs with 4-H that I've wanted to do, and I've had to turn to other counties for. I was interested in learning to show livestock, and I had to go all the way to Lenore County for a one-day program, a one-day livestock school program, to learn how to show sheep. I got to learn how to show sheep and take care of livestock, and I had to go multiple counties over because Harnett County does not have a livestock arena. And so, I, my family, and I know many other 4-H families would really, really like if Harnett County had its own livestock arena so that we can start our own livestock club and the youth can learn how to do that here. I also enjoy archery, and my brothers like to shoot. They love shooting sports. For a while, my family was going to Lee County for a shooting sports club meeting every month, because we were unable to do that in Harnett County. We have no shooting range in Harnett County, and so I and my family and multiple other families that I know of in Harnett County would love if Harnett County would build a shooting range so that our 4-H club members can start our own shooting sports club. I also do independent projects as a 4-Her. The past few years, I've written a project record book about outdoor recreation, where I basically document when I go camping, and when I go kayaking, and when I do fun things outdoors. And one of the most beautiful places that I have kayaked for these project record books is the Upper Little River, very near my home, and it is currently in need of protection from land development and from erosion control. And so, it's not getting a lot of press because it's not as big as the Cape Fear River, and so my community needs for that river to be protected in some way, whether that be making it a wildlife preserve or limiting development along the banks of the river. There's a similar situation going on with Big Gully Swamp. My family owns a small portion of the swamp, and it is currently in danger of, like, being filled in for land development, and my community needs for that swamp to be protected. I have been able to see the damage being done to it, even with the very small portion that I have. I can see the damages being done to it within the past couple years, and so my community would really appreciate if that was made into a wildlife reserve, or if something was done to limit the development on top or around the swamp. Those are just some of the issues that I, as a youth of Harnett County, would like to see addressed in upcoming local legislation. Thank y'all very much for letting me speak. I look forward to seeing you all at the convention at the end of this month, hopefully, and I hope you will attend the Saturday morning youth involvement breakfast as well. Thank you, and y'all have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much. Item number four, discuss the request to approve a license change for ESRI mapping software. Ira Hall, got you online?
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great, great. Well, I'm joining you remote, and Clint Williams, our GIS manager, is there in person, and he'll help answer any of the questions as they come up in the room. I'm out of town this week, but we really needed to move on the licensing for GIS and the ESRI, and we would like to transition to an enterprise license this month, and this is why we're presenting to you guys today. The cost of this particular project is why we needed to bring it before the board, so we'll just review what's going on there. The enterprise license upgrade will allow us to improve our current services and expand our services as the need arises. But before I go into too many details around the license, I just wanted to take a moment and just kind of remind everybody just a couple of things of what GIS does for us, and make sure everybody understands that it's more than just a map. So I'm going to share my screen out and just kind of... Here. Are you guys able to see my screen now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, as you can see on our current GIS website, not only do we have maps, but we also have all the data from all the addresses, schools, polling places, emergency services, any public safety, worship centers, all the history that's behind some of this stuff, and then developments and all the other great data that our county gathers, but GIS is the aggregator of all this data. So the mapping piece, which is this right here, which is the campus of our current county administration buildings in the courthouse, right here is the RCL building, which you guys are meeting in today. And it makes it all look pretty and neat, but all the data over here to the side is pulled from multiple departments, from systems like our tax department, our registered deeds, our planning, our permitting, our education, elections, public safety, soil and water. All of that is aggregated into one database, pulled the data together so it makes sense and is easily accessible to all of our residents and any businesses, anybody that's coming in to look at all this stuff. And all that's really convenient. A quick look at this particular parcel is all here, right here on this right side of the info window. But our current services are being limited by our ESRI license that we currently have. It keeps us from being able to use some of the hardware resources we have available. It's just a limiting on the software side of things. This limitation causes periodic slowness when the mapping system isn't heavily used. A specific example that recently happened in the last year is the tax revaluation work. All of the tax reevaluation, people that were in the field and in the office using the GIS mapping tools to help us get accurate in assessment values for all of the property and all the new things that are going on. They were heavily using our GIS to make that all happen, but because of the limitations of our licensing, we were, it was trying to use a lot of resources that just were not available. It's the way our licenses work right now, it's kind of like owning a sports car, but you can't go over 55 miles per hour. It's just the limiting factor, and we have to get to a better license setup so we can get over that 55 miles per hour limitation. To add on licenses, we needed, we would have to increase our cost... Oh, wait. To add licenses, we needed, would have brought the cost nearer to the enterprise agreement cost, and we would still have the limitations. One of the licenses by itself, without the enterprise agreement, would have been around $44,000. If we had bought enough licenses outside of the enterprise agreement, we would have broken the cost of the enterprise agreement and not have all the extra benefits. The enterprise agreement basically gives us unlimited license of ARC products on-premise, and it gives our GIS team more access to their online tools and some of the capabilities that are out online through ESRI, the ESRI software. If you look at page nine in your agenda, it shows all the different licenses and products that we have available now to us, and I've got that up on the screen right now. The big ones for us are this, on this enterprise software and extension side, that's where most of the expense, this ArcGIS Enterprise, the license that we would need, would have been around $44,000 just for one of those, and that's kind of uncapped, and we can use that as multiple times to start hosting more online services there on-premise. This is a three-year agreement, and each year it costs us $113,300, which is why we're bringing this before the board, just to let you guys know that we're spending over $100,000 in the cut, and we're just looking for the approval of this licensing on the next meeting on August 7th. Do you guys have any questions on what GIS does or what this licensing means for us?
Questions, comments?
So I'm assuming this $44,000 cost for this one software package, I guess, that you were discussing is an annual fee as well?
Correct, yeah. That was an annual fee that includes all the support and all the things there.
And if we were to go this route, then that would, if I understand it correctly, that would eliminate or help eliminate the bogging down or slowing down when there are a lot of users accessing the GIS system?
That's correct. What we really need to do is to create multiple online systems. We have to have a couple of licenses, this ArcGIS Enterprise that's here on the screen, and then this, there's one called Portal, which I'm not locating right now, and that one is another, you know, like $10,000 or whatever, but the portal allows us to put multiple our GIS enterprise servers behind it so we can run different maps. So we could have one for our GIS enterprise server for tax, our GIS enterprise server for permitting, just for examples, or public safety. All three of those would be behind the portal, but to the public, it wouldn't be different links. It'd be a nice synchronous system that would make it make sense to the public so they could access different things, and they wouldn't see the resource difference. It would just make it all coherent and easy to use.
And that would be included in this enterprise agreement that we're looking at?
Yeah, yeah. That's all in the licensing side of this.
Got you. Thank you.
Yeah. So we can use this multiple, anything on that left side that says uncapped quantities of the Table A, we pretty much have unlimited ability to use that, and that'd really help us out. Some of this other stuff is really tremendous, too, and allows more capabilities that we'll start introducing to departments as we go along to allow them to take more advantage of the mapping system.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments?
Any other questions?
Will the board add this next week? Okay. You go ahead and add this to the consent agenda for next week, Mr. Jamie? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, thank you, Ira.
Yeah, thank you for letting me join you remote, and you guys have a wonderful day.
Sure, you as well.
You too.
Moving on to item number five, discuss a request to continue your membership with the North Carolina Cardinal Consortium. Ms. Joanna Cox? Good morning.
Good morning. All right, so the Library respectfully requests to maintain our membership in the NC Cardinal Consortium. As being a part of this consortium, the Harnett County Public Library System gains access to a shared catalog and integrated library system, which enables us to offer citizens of Harnett County access to over 8 million library resources statewide. This collaboration with the North Carolina State Library and other member libraries also leverages federal and local funds to achieve operational efficiencies and savings for the county while providing more effective use of public library resources. Are there any questions?
Questions? Pleasure of the board to go ahead and add this to the consent agenda next week as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead and add this, Ms. Jamie, as well. Discuss a request regarding an amendment to a current contract for public services. Mr. Chad Bean, good to see you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thanks for having me. Coming to you this morning to request an amendment to an existing contract that we have with Republic Services. Republic Services operates all of our convenience sites. They staff it. They also do all the hauling for us at our sites as well. This amendment would show a price increase due to the fact that we will have our hours of operation extended, which we're excited about that, provide extra customer service for our citizens and more opportunities for them to dispose of their trash. So our hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday, 7:30 to 5:30, rather than five days a week, we would be open six days a week. So we're excited about that. We've tried to move in that direction for a while now, and we're glad to see this come to fruition. We have budgeted for this. This is not a shock to our budget, so, and we planned on this, so are there any questions as far as anything pertaining to the amendment?
Questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, just a point of information, how often do we bid this out, Bean?
We're on a, I think this is a five-year agreement. We've got two years left on this agreement.
Pleasure of the board to add this to the consent agenda next week as well. Mr. Jamie will go ahead and add this as well? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, report of the 2223 tax settlement, Christine Wallace. And Ms. Amy Bane.
Amy Bane. Good morning. Amy Bane and I are here this morning. She's the deputy tax collector in our office, and we are here to present this morning the tax settlement for the 2022 tax year. So this is a required presentation that has to be printed and presented to the board every year. Amy has done it the last couple of years, so we're just going to let her keep going. Also, I'd like to include that we created this presentation about three weeks ago, and since that time, we ran the numbers again, so there are some minor changes in some of the percentages due to some paid bills and some refunds and releases, so she'll present those in there.
Good morning. Yes, as Christine said, I'm here to present the settlement, and it's something that is required by general statute. The report includes a summary of our charges of the levy, our discovered levy and penalties, and then the collection and release and adjustment of that. We go a little bit further, and we include what has been collected by the tax and tag program from DMV, and we also include, we break out what our gap registration bills. It's just where someone has a gap in their registration, and then we bill them for the property taxes. But, so as you, as you see, the first page is basically that introduction and the statute referencing what we do. The next, the next slide will give us an overview of what we do, what we billed for 2022, and that's from the time between July 1st of 2022 to June 30th of 2023, was $71,543,764.77. And then we collected out of that, just collections that came, you know, through mail payments that came in the office, online. By mail was, and our mortgage company payments was $70,461,861.99. Then you see the figures for the release and adjustments. Those are adjustments for what happened if there was a discrepancy in the bill, and then we list what was uncollected on our real property and what was collected on, uncollected on our personal property, and then those two figures balance. The next slide is basically just a breakdown of the levy and our collection percentages on our real and personal property, and that's what we bill in our office. It was 99.35%. As you'll see in your packet, the public service is a discrepancy. That's what Christine referenced earlier. We have finally collected all of the public service billing, and then the motor vehicles, which is the tax and tag, that's all that's done at DMV. You'll see that what that was collected to, there's some differences. That one's pretty set. We just get that from DMV. So, and then we break out our gap billing, and then the next slide just basically is a summary of what we billed and what we collected, and then we just average it out. The next slide basically is just a comparison over the past few years. We go back to five years. You'll see where, how we've steadily kept that real and personal property at a very high level. Public service should always be, as it is, at 100%. And then our motor vehicles from tax and tag, it's steadily increasing, just, I think that's going to be basically because of our population increase in the county as well. But overall, you know, we have, we've done very well. Our, our staff works and takes really good pride in what they do. They work hard, and they take, they enjoy their job, and they just, you know, we just appreciate y'all's support behind us in what we do, and if we have any question, if you have any questions, Christine and I'll be glad to answer them.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Doesn't everyone have to pay their automobile tax before they can get a license?
Yes, they have to pay the taxes on the property to renew the tags.
So why are we less than 100%?
Hey, man, don't do that.
Well, there's probably still a lot of folks riding around with their tire tags. But what happens is when they go in and renew that tag, that spurs that gap bill. DMV sends us a us a record of, say, if they wrote around a year on an expired tag, they send us the record for the time of the gap between the two active registrations, and then we collect that. But they're paying it at DMV upfront, yes. So, but yeah, probably just have a bunch of folks that are riding around on expired tags, or they may not have renewed that tag, the vehicle may not pass inspection, or, you know, they just don't have it anymore.
And then you have out of state people who move in and out of state, and they have renewed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Then we'll move on to item number eight, you get that as well, Ms. Wallace?
All right, thank you.
Discuss tax administrator collection, 324.
All right, thank you. So this, too, is another statutory requirement every year that the board is required to charge the tax administrator with the authority to collect taxes on the remaining unpaid balances back to 10 years, so that would be 2013 to the current year, to 2023. It also allows for any adjustments, changes, or additions that have been made to the tax record, and also declares a first lien on any real property in all taxing jurisdictions within the county. The order allows for a tax administrator to have direct authority to require and enable the ability to levy upon the property and to sell any real or personal property should it become delinquent. This is all in accordance with the law and also gives us the ability to attach to wages, bank accounts, and any kind of garnishments or rent attachments. So what I'm requesting is a motion to allow tax administrator Christine Wallace to collect all real, personal, and public service taxes for the 2324 levy year, and that order's in your packet.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Pleasure of the board to add this to the consent agenda for next week.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead and add this to next week's agenda as well, Ms. Jamie. Item nine, discuss a request to approve a change in the Harnett County School Employee Member Administration Appeals Board for the school bus stop arm violations. You are not Chris Sappel, but good morning.
I am, sorry at this point. Hopefully I'll be just as brief.
So I'm here today to ask the board to switch the Harnett County Schools representatives and the alternate for the Administrative Appeals Board for stop arm ordinance. Currently, Araya Parker is the, he's the voting member for the appeals board and represents the school district. We currently have Tommy Stewart as the alternate, so anytime Mr. Parker cannot attend, Mr. Stewart will step in and fill his spot. Due to Mr. Parker's ever-increasing busy schedule, we've realized that Mr. Stewart is appearing more and more on the school board's behalf. And so after a discussion with them and just kind of talking about the schedule, we realized it would probably be best if we switched the two roles, so that Mr. Stewart would then take the role as the school board, or the Harnett County Schools member, and Mr. Parker would be the alternate and would fill in whenever Mr. Stewart would not be able to. But just based on the way his schedule is going, we're just realizing that Mr. Stewart's coming, you know, with an ever-increasing frequency, so we would just like to come today to ask that change be made to reflect what we're seeing in practice, you know, when we hold these monthly appeal hearings.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, how many years is the term?
I believe the term is for, I believe it's three years?
Three years?
Yes, ma'am. And so we're only, we're not even halfway through at this point.
Okay. This has just been agreed by both parties to switch?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Stewart's been doing a fantastic job filling in, you know, very capable individual. Haven't seen any drop off from when he's there as opposed to Mr. Parker, it's just, we wanted to reflect what we're seeing, and that's what we're here asking for today.
Well, it seems like it's been done fairly, so that's what I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure of the board. Go ahead and add this to the consent agenda as well. Thank you, sir. I guess you're still up, Thomas. Discuss a request for NC DOT regarding Buddy Barefoot Road.
So this was tabled from July 17th regular meeting. At that time, Mr. Pell came before the board asking that the board adopt a resolution opposing the abandonment of a public road from the North Carolina Secondary Road System at Buddy Barefoot Road, SR 2049. At the time, that was, that was tabled, and based on additional discussion that was had, we're coming back to you today not only to seek input and for y'all to be able to discuss, but also to change that resolution a little bit to where we go to DOT and request that they make the necessary repairs to the road to be able to open it back up. My understanding is, based on different weather events we've had over the past several years, significant portions of that road have been washed out, it's a dirt road, and so that road is relied on pretty significantly by farmers getting to and from their fields in the area, and so the loss of that road would impact landowners in the area. And so instead of just having a road that's rutted and washed out, just see if we can get DOT in here to actually fix it. So that's what, that's what the resolution we're bringing back before you today is requesting is that DOT come in and fix up that secondary road.
Very nice. Yeah, I can see how that's gonna be a necessity for even emergency services to make the hypotenuse through there. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Cool.
Are there any houses on that road?
As you look, that's, that's pretty much what we have there, it's, it's that one tract of land that's actually, you know, cut by that road, and then some others up in there. So I do not believe there's any houses along there, it's mostly, it's mostly, you know, for agricultural use that's backing it around there.
Well, I certainly appreciate you going back to DOT to ask them to fix the road, because it's very hard to get DOT to do anything because they're so busy. I don't want to say anything negative about them, but I know it's really hard to get them to come into these areas to fix whatever's needed to be fixed. But the road needs to be fixed, we don't need to just abandon that road, and I appreciate the way that you're wording it, because we don't know what the future holds. There's more rooftops here than there are anything else, so it's a possibility there are gonna be some houses on that road.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Nichols' comment, if that, from the looks of this map, it would seem obvious to me, but if that would improve response time for emergency services who need to get from Bethel Baptist to Shady Grove, then I could, I could certainly see a necessity to make that request.
If you actually, if you go onto the, I know that's just the exhibit, but if you go onto the GIS and zoom out, you see that it's actually, if you close off that road access from, you know, one point to the other where that road hits, it's a pretty significant way.
About five miles.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Not to mention Mr. Ward there's got a sewer main that runs right down to the side.
Yes, sir.
And if DOT is allowed to close the road, then that cost falls back on us.
Right.
The line's not going anywhere, but we still got access, so when it blows out and we can't get to it, we got a problem.
Not only that, if we allow DOT to close that road, it starts a process of other roads in that same condition, that, you know, they would have to, they would just close that road, and no, I agree with you.
Yes, ma'am. So, so the resolution is essentially, you were approached by DOT asking essentially, what is our thought on them closing the road? I believe the recommendation that they've made is to close the road, but now they're asking for a resolution one way or the other, and so I think this is, you know, a significant step in letting them know what our official position is on that.
Mr. Chairman, can we have staff prepare us? Can we have a resolution? Uh, yes. Get it done in a minute.
I actually already have one. I believe it's with the clerk already, so we have a draft resolution, pretty much asking for the necessary repairs to be made.
Pleasure of the board to go ahead and add this to consent agenda to approve the request.
Can I make a, just a quick comment on the, about it, just so everybody's familiar with?
Sure, go ahead, sir.
Okay.
Take a step up.
I represent a large tract that landed on there. 2018, we, you know, DOT said it's gonna be 2050, you know, so it's not being, it's been abandoned, it's been closed, it's been dangerous, it's turning into a landfill, but we can privatize the road, there will be one spot that, where, I think you see, I sent out a PDF, I don't know if anybody's had time to look at it, but where it goes through a swamp, and it would take billions to repair. So it won't be all the way through, but it will be a road, there will be, there could be agreements with the water authority to provide them access to, to maintain the road. Right where the curve is, is where it'll probably never be repairable without a bridge or something like that. And so it wouldn't go all the way through, but it'd still be a functioning road that way. It's been abandoned since 2018, so, and it's becoming more and more of a landfill, so one, the dumping and some of the other things that are going on. When we say it's not gonna be abandoned, it's gonna be privatized and fixed up and gated, and then over the next five to seven years, the hope is to turn it into a park. So we need to address the dumping, and we also need to address, you know, is this gonna go on another 10 or 20 years, something like that, where it is effectively abandoned and we haven't achieved anything?
Yes, sir.
So if I could ask a question, you said you'd like to turn this land into a park, and I think I heard that discussion previously. Do you own all that land on both sides of that road there?
Yeah, it's a thousand acres, which about 400 acres has been placed into conservation easement, and the other 400 acres, once that restoration project is done, longleaf pines, some other things. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with Carver Street State Park, but the same thing was done with that front area of that state park when it was finished up a decade ago now. So that's, that's the concept behind, so it would become, so it would be a private road into a park, which would be fully accessible up to about 200-foot section, which could still be reached for sewer line maintenance and that sort of thing, it's just we can't drive, you know, ambulances through it.
So just to make sure I understand, other than, I guess, those two corner properties which look to me to...
Almonds, yeah, those two, there's two houses right on.
You're telling me that you own all the rest of the land from, on both sides of Buddy Backpack Road all the way down to Shady Grove Road?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so it should be two-track, and I agree, we should, you know, DOT's willing to spend the 50 or 60 million on it in the next couple of years, but if they're saying it's gonna be 2050, which is what they told us, then it's just untenable the way it is, and it's been essentially abandoned through our lifetime. So it could be a two-track, where we, what kind of agreements could we get to get the road where it works to a certain point, it probably, it wouldn't be good enough for ambulances, and it wouldn't go all the way through in that one spot, and then we could stop with the dumping and the other things that are going on.
Pleasure of the board.
The phone?
Forward on the consent agenda.
Allow it.
Go ahead and move forward and put this on the consent agenda for next week. You are still up, Thomas. Discuss a request of NC DOT regarding Curran Road.
You know, Chris is starting to click a wire, I said I was gonna be here real quick. So this one is for the, DOT has also approached us asking for our position on abandoning a public road from the secondary road system. This one is at a portion of, it's only, it's only a portion of State Road 1445, it's Curran This is, this is essentially, it's only, it's only a partial, I don't know if we have the map, it was included, there it is, so we're only looking at a partial abandonment here. And my understanding is that the landowners approached DOT about it, DOT went ahead and they did their review, and DOT is also recommending a partial abandonment of this piece of property. I think based on discussion with the landowners as well as DOT, it does not appear that there is any issue that's been identified for reasons to opposing it. So this resolution is essentially to, to support the partial abandonment of that portion of Curran Road.
Mr. Chairman, I was approached by the, there's two landowners along Curran Road, Curran family and William Dan Andrews, and I was approached by, by both of those about getting this road closed, like the previous one that we discussed, it's becoming a dump ground. And so they, they submitted a letter to DOT requesting that it be closed. There's absolutely no use for that road, it serves no purpose. So I would request that we, the board's approval, add this to the consent agenda to approve this resolution at our next meeting.
Questions? Pleasure of the board.
Are any houses on that road?
No, ma'am.
Nothing, it's just an open road.
That's right.
Landowners have requested, I don't have any.
This one, landowner. I still say if we start doing this, one road, we're gonna end up with other roads, it's gonna be more valuable than these roads.
Well, DOT is not maintaining these roads.
Well, it should, that's the problem. DOT have a job to do, just like we and everybody else, citizens have a job to do, and they got a lot of money in the last couple of years to do what they have to do. Well, I, I do know that they have a high schedule, because there's so much to do here in this county as far as repairing all of these roads. I'm just not for them to abandon no roads, because it's gonna cause us some problems in the long run.
Is it possible to pull this parcel or this road up on the GIS so I can actually see a clear map? One second. Just curious, seeing kind of the lay of the land, this is like a, with the last one we discussed, it was a cut-through road that could service.
That's what this one is.
That would be used. Now, if this one right here is just something that's out there, and I, you know, I've got a few of them out my way as well that are just dirt roads beaten down, and they, a road to nowhere, literally just a cut-through that saves you five seconds or 10 seconds.
And nobody uses the road, it's just sitting there?
That's right.
Yeah, so I want to get it pulled up on the map to see exactly what we're looking at.
I take that back, the road is used, it's used to, to, and to dump trash.
Is it, is it right near Traxland?
The what?
Is it right near Traxland?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of between Calypso Springs and...
That's actually who owns part of it.
Right there, front road right there.
Well, abandoning the road ain't gonna stop what's happening. I'm for it, y'all wanna do that. I mean, I say abandon the road, it's not gonna stop the...
It's Curran Road right here, this road right here.
They'll find a way. I'm just one boat, whatever y'all wanna do on this, it's not that important to me.
I mean, Calypso Springs will off here.
If DOT closes it off, how will they do that, by putting up signs and all of that?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
If DOT closes it off, how will they do that? I mean, putting up signs for the interest of the road and all of that?
I, I'm not, can't speak to that, that'd be DOT, but I believe it'd be similar to what, what we've seen in other roads that have been... to what, what we've seen in other roads that have been abandoned where, you know, initially the signs would go up just saying road closed and, you know, barricading it off.
Yeah, so they'll barricade it, so the problem won't continue about the dumping and everything. I mean, it's at least going to be barricaded, correct?
That's correct. If, if the land, if, if DOT abandons that, doesn't that land go back to the landowners?
Yeah.
And the landowners are going to put up barricades to prevent anyone from going down there.
Typically, in years gone by, with the few of them I've seen, DOT will detach it from their, go and take the tile up, they'll pile everything on the, you know, landowner's side, and it's, they'll get their side ditch back where it flowed water, tie it, and just by proxy creates a barricade.
Yeah, I mean, generally what you see initially when they first abandon it, is you get those big road closure signs, you know, the, the white and orange ones that go up, creating a barricade, and then as they come through and handle all the drainage, now that it's been disconnected from the system, you start seeing it more, where you get those drainage ditches along the side where it's now just a continuous flow on through, essentially just cutting that road off.
You made, yeah, we can, you don't have to make a motion, you just requested, so, you know, if that's okay with everybody, if it's okay with me, but I'm just not in favor of closing off roads.
Pleasure of the board, go ahead and add this to the consent agenda? Go ahead and add this to the consent agenda?
I'm good with it, but if, you know, if we have some opposition, you want to put it as a separate item, that's fine too, so.
I don't have opposition, I mean, explaining everything, I'm fine with it, but I'm not really a hundred percent.
And I understand, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, put it on that agenda.
Go ahead and add this to the consent agenda for next week as well. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Discuss a proposed agreement to issue an appropriation of funds in the form of debt forgiveness to the Harnett County Economic Development Partnership, Mr. Dwyer, snap.
Good morning, board members. On April the sixth of two thousand twenty, one of your predecessor boards entered into a, adopted a resolution which authorized the conveyance of real property by private sale. The real property that was involved was a twenty-six point forty-one acre tract in the Brightwater subdivision, which was designated on maps as lots six through sixteen, which was eleven lots of the Brightwater subdivision phase three. The board had, through the economic development department, had gotten marketing appraisals on this property, and at that time it was determined that this property had a value of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars per acre. So if, if my math is correct, for the twenty-six point forty-one acre tract, the sale price at that time was established as one million five hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Also, on April the sixth of two thousand twenty, the county entered into a, the county with the Harnett County Properties Corporation, which has changed its name to the Harnett County Economic Development Partnership, and I'll call it partnership from here on out, entered into a property transfer and appropriation agreement. In that agreement, the county agreed to sell to the partnership lots six through sixteen for the appraised price of one million five hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. When that closing took place, that, that property was deeded to the partnership, and in return, the county financed this deal with the partnership, whereby the partnership issued a promissory note to the county for one million five hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, the purchase price, plus three percent interest from the date of the note, which is April twentieth, two thousand twenty until paid. This note was secured by a first deed of trust on the eleven lots. Subsequent to that conveyance, the game plan was that the partnership would take possession of these lots, would improve the lots, maintain them, and market them for sale for economic development purposes pursuant to the guidelines in the transfer agreement that it had with the county. Once sold, the partnership had the, had the option of requesting debt forgiveness under section five of the agreement. And since this is prolific for our discussions today, let me just read for you that section from this appropriation transfer agreement between the county and the partnership. Section five reads as follows, appropriation to the partnership. Harnett County may in its sole discretion, on a case-by-case basis, choose to forgive the repayment of all or a portion of any payment on the debt evidenced by the note as an appropriation of those funds to the partnership. Any such appropriation of these funds shall be under the authority and in compliance of state law. Such funds shall be used by the partnership solely for the public purpose of promoting and supporting economic development within the county. Then the section goes on a list, various lists here of types of uses that would fall into this category. I won't go through those, but most, all of these have to do with their promoting, their partnership agreement with the county of promoting economic development in the county. So that option was available under the agreement. Now bring us up to current. The county has now become aware that the partnership has entered into a real property purchase and sell agreement with Harnett Health System, Common, Inc. As part of that agreement, sale transfer, the property will be transferred to Harnett Health, and the directors, in consideration of that, the directors of the partnership have met, and they're coming today to the county commissioners with a proposal concerning their sale of this property to the Harnett Health System and the possible forgiveness of their debt to the county. This time I'd like to introduce Angie Stewart, who's with the Economic Development Department of Harnett County, and also she'll be introduced to you, certain members of the partnership and its chairman, Phyllis Godwin.
I'm Angie Stewart, interim director, economic development. With me is Phyllis Godwin, partnership chair, Jake Mayes, the partnership treasurer, and Jerry Milton, who is a member of the board and also serves on the executive committee. So as Mr. Snow explained, this is a request for the board to forgive the debt per the appropriation agreement. The agreement was put together a number of years ago with the intent to support the board in partnership with the county and the economic development effort. Along with that request, the, the partnership would propose that they repay to the county out of those proceeds, forgiven proceeds, a loan that was given to the partnership a number of years ago to support their operation. The project that they are entering into is an exciting project. It would include, in short term, an eight million dollar investment and fifty-five jobs at a wage around eighty thousand per job, where our county average wage is just over forty thousand. And then the long-range plan for the property would include multimillion dollar other projects in the medical arena and approximately two hundred and fifty jobs in the same average wage area. So I will let Phyllis and the other board members speak to you about their ideas in partnership.
One of the things that we had discussed was, as she mentioned, that with the forgiveness, we'd be able to repay the three hundred and sixty-seven thousand and some odd dollars in a loan that the county has, so it would clear out that account. Jake has gone over the, the amounts with the interest and so forth. We do understand that with the one point seven, it will not completely clear that, but we would take the balance of that, which is going to be paid over a four-year term, and be able to clear that out as well. So what we would hope is to be able to have the forgiveness of this loan, to be able to put back into the county and to promote the county and possibly be able to bring more industry in. There is some interest, there is a lot of growth happening around us, and we would like to be able to be part of that growth. Any question?
Well, I was at the table when the agreement was made, that the money was supposed to be paid back to the county. But if we're talking about creating jobs and bringing more jobs to the county, we really don't have no guarantee of that, because I've seen these things come before us and be discussed, and we agree to the money and all. But I guess in order for us to, we need jobs back, that's one thing I do know. We need jobs, that, to me, is about the most important thing that we could invest in, and that's what we do, we invest in a whole lot of money in creating jobs. And I do realize that without the investment, we don't get anything in return and all. So...
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that we want to do is to improve on the Edgerton Park, doing some clearing to be able to get that site ready. Of course, that would make it more interesting to those that want to relocate, and without the funds, we don't have anything available for the site readiness for that at this time.
I understand, because that's been proposed too for many years, that it would be cleaned off to, so that we could recruit more jobs. I'm going to take a risk, I'm going to go for it, but I'm telling you, something's got to work here.
Well, I, I believe that with the, the county deciding to do the economic development partnership, things are definitely going to move forward, they already are, so.
Well, you can't guarantee that, and I know that. We just, we just have to hope and pray that it happens, because this is something citizens really need. So I, I won't protest it, I know the money was supposed to come back to the county, but then you may need money to create an atmosphere to bring more jobs here, so, it's okay, I'm agree to it.
Thank you.
But I'm going to tell you, I don't see some jobs in the next five or six years that will come back to you.
Understood.
This is a matter, I was elected in two thousand and fourteen, and this is a matter I've been fighting since then, and I ain't seen much improvement in it.
I understand.
Any other questions? Pleasure of the board? Go ahead and add this to the consent agenda for next week as well.
We actually have a public hearing, so it'll be a separate item.
All right, so we'll go ahead and add this as a separate item and have a public hearing next week. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, discuss appointment, voting, and an ex officio member for a I ninety-five, I forty crossroads alliance.
Thank you, Chair. So from the efforts that we made and the commitment that we have entered into with the I ninety-five, I forty crossroads of alliance, comes with that the opportunity for us to appoint a voting member to their board and three ex officio members. The intent is that one of those ex officio members would be our economic development director, which we're in the process of working towards hiring. The other two would then be available, ex officio would be available to the board to decide along with the voting member. We did look, it is considered with the agreement that that voting member would be a businessperson within the county.
Open for discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chair, and, and just from the beginning, I, I think my thoughts on the voting member position, I would like to see it be a part of our economic development partnership, somebody who sits on that executive board, preferably the chair, but I can't speak for Phyllis. But I believe that if, if our goal is to bring jobs to this county, to in, improve the, improve the product that we have to offer, business and, and industry that is looking for to relocate or locate, I think it's important that, that communication be well-established between the Crossroads Alliance and our Harnett County partnership. I think the best way for that to happen is for that voting member that we determined to be a part of the Crossroads Alliance Board, to be a part of our Harnett County Economic Development Partnership. That's my feelings on it.
Would you like that to be the chair, the chair of the partnership, would be the voting member, whoever that may be across...
I, I think we would probably, my, even though I would feel like that would be the most obvious choice, I think maybe I would just like to lead that up to the partnership to make that decision as to who they would like to see represent the county from their board, is the way, maybe I would throw it out there.
So we'd rather have a member from the partnership be elected, recommended from them in order to serve as a...
Do we not have to approve that?
Yeah, once they make that recommendation, then we would have to approve it, I would think.
Then I would ask Ms. Godwin if she would agree to serve.
I thought we just said...
I mean, if, if she prefers not to, then I propose that we nominate somebody else.
Didn't we say we're going to let the, that board, the economic development board make a decision who was serving for that? Is that not...
They would make a recommendation.
That's what was proposed, so why are we going to nominate her here today?
Is there a time element here to make that decision, Mr. Trell?
No, not specifically. They are meeting and they have their current board, and so really it's one of those things that as they begin the effort to renovate the Magnolia Building towards their workforce center, that we're able to be a part of that as they, they make those steps forward. So there's not an immediate timeline, but, so I mean, if in the next two to three months, it would be at least the desired timeline.
Ms. Stewart, when's the next meeting of the partnership?
The sixteenth, I believe.
Sixteenth?
Correct.
So do you think, Ms. Godwin, you think that's something that your board would be able to make a recommendation coming out of that meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know what our next meeting is after that.
Would be the first, let's see, meeting that we would have would be the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
It would be about the same.
Put it on the twenty-first agenda and get the recommendation from the partnership.
Yeah, they'll be done with their meeting.
I would like to say something. I'm not trying to be difficult here, but with the money that we are investing in this, I want to see something work, and for our citizens, the citizens of this county, the prospect of that happening, it depends on the board and what the board do. And I have proposed, in voting for the five million, what was, a million dollars, that we educate our people here in this county about those jobs existed, coming, coming available. The only way I know that we really can do that is do that other counties in this state, they go into the schools and make the schools a part of it through training and all of that, because every child don't go to college. I mean, the, the way the setup in these, uh, community college, some of those, those, some of those trainings for jobs pay more than going and spending money for years for college. So I'm hoping that you all will consider doing some kind of training within our school system, and this, this, this helps our citizens in the county to be able to apply and be qualified for those jobs, because you've got three counties here that's investing in this, and we want to do everything that we can to increase the number of employees that are going to be hired from this county, and I think it can be done. I've been thinking about this, and that'd be the only proposed way that I think that we can do it, by going through the educational system. Do you not agree with that, that proposal would be a good proposal? Because you know what? Uh, because you know what, we don't need to invest all this money.
Alright, Commissioner McCoy here, let's, uh, get back to the topic here.
But that is the topic.
Well, we're trying to figure out a voting and ex officio member for the alliance.
I thought we had already agreed to that.
No, ma'am, we're still trying to.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought that we had agreed to it later.
So Commissioner Matthews had requested that we allow the, uh, partnership in order to vote and come up with a recommendation in order for their voting mem- or the voting member for the I ninety-five, I forty alliance.
I agree with that.
Okay. So we're good as far as the voting, we'll go ahead and.
Right, we'll put that on our August twenty-first agenda.
That'll work, and what about as far as the ex officio? We'll go ahead and handle that then.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. You good?
Uh, good.
I'm good.
I'm, uh, Mr. Matthews on up.
Oh. Alright, so, uh, we'll go ahead and add this to the twenty-first agenda, and we'll allow the partnership to go ahead and come up with a recommendation after their sixteen. We go? Alright.
Hello, I'm a guy who's, uh, disrupted.
Just trying to keep it on.
I'm very passionate about this.
I hear ya, I gotcha.
I guess so.
Alright, uh, number fourteen, discuss a request from Harnett Regional Water for approval of multiple contracts, Mr. Steve Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, this is a first for our department, I'm here at the behest of the legal department, to get several service contracts approved. It's my understanding, even though these funds were appropriated into budget and approved by the board, that because they exceed a certain dollar amount, um, they need your approval, so I'm here to ask for that approval now, as you know, we've got about a half billion dollars in assets, and it doesn't take much to exceed a threshold when you've got multiple, uh, vendors, uh, or companies who provide these services to us. We're, we're dependent upon them, um, I don't think any utility in the state has a staff that can maintain, um, all the complex and, uh, increasingly sophisticated equipment out there to run water and sewer systems, so I'm here at their, um, request to ask this permission from you. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you may have, or if not, the legal department could a- ask, uh, answer them hopefully.
Questions, comments from Mr. Ward? legislature of the board to add this for approval. Alright, we will add this to the consent agenda for next week as well. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, commissioners, in front of you, uh, you have appointments needed. Um, this time we'll review some applications to serve on boards and committees. First up, I see here highlighted, uh, we have a social services board, uh, the current chairman Craig McKinney would like to be reconsidered for appointment, his term expired uh, on June thirtieth, so this would be his second term and he's eligible for reappointment, his application is attached. I currently sit on that board, and I will say it is a pleasure to serve with Mr. Craig McKinney, and he is a valuable asset to that board.
Am I reading this right, Mr. Chair, Miss, Ms. Williams is automatically reappointed because she's appointed by the Social Security Commission?
This is true. Yes, sir.
Don't have to worry about her. I move to report Mr. Day.
How many seats open? How many seats are open on this board?
Um, there's currently only one seat that is going to be open, the other one's gonna be, uh, requested by the Social Security Administration's board.
So that's, this really.
So it's only one position, so you have an application from Mr. Ricky Day and Mr. Craig McKinney.
Mr. Chair, I think I've heard, uh, sentiments from you and Commissioner Morris, uh, one for each of these applicants, I think we probably need to put that on as a separate item for the voting meeting and make a decision to that.
It's a pleasure of the board to go ahead and add this as a separate line item for next week, and we can discuss that for appointments. Um, for the social services board, we're gonna go ahead and discuss this as a separate line item for appointments, um, may Tarantino back to that, uh, we're. We also have a historic properties commission, there are five vacancies on this board, and there is an application, or Matt Willis would like to be considered for appointment from District Two, um, his application is attached. Is there any issue with adding Mr. Willis to the consent agenda for approval next week? We will add Mr. Willis for approval for the consent agenda next week for the Historic Properties Commission, and we'll also add the social services board as a separate line item for discussion, please.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding.
Mr. Chairman?
Pardon?
That's, um, there are five vacancies, I'm just, uh.
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna need some more, uh, applicants.
I'm looking into finding someone for District One.
Okay. Alright, we will move on to the county matters report, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, sir, um, the item that I have is we're looking at making a change in order to streamline our process, in the past, we have brought back to the board, each of these street items is an individual item, kinda clogs up the agenda, so therefore I've listed them under my report, uh, during the meetings that we'll have as work sessions, and then these, if there's no objection, then will be added to the consent agenda in order to speed up our agenda process. So, there are listed there, Atkins Village Phase Three, Harvest Grove, Mason Point, Mills Meadows, Sierra Village, at Overhill, Section One, Phase One, South Creek, Phase One, Two and Three, Stetson, and Sweetwater, so if there's no objections, we'll add those to the consent agenda.
Any objection to adding those to the consent agenda? Go ahead and add those to the consent agenda for approval next week?
That's all I have.
Thanks, sir, any need for a closed session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Amen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
A motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.